It's getting hot because they got the air conditioning about down on fifty-eight.
We're gonna call the meeting to order this evening. It's time to begin our county commission meeting, seven o'clock. Tonight, as we open our session, we'll have our invocation. It will be led by Commissioner Cheryl Wilson and our pledge to the flag by Commissioner Bert Chalfont. So if you would, please stand for the invocation and then the pledge to the flag.
Please bow your head. Gracious heavenly father, we thank you so much for this glorious day that we have and for the freedoms that we have to assemble here in our county commission meeting of Williamson County. We thank you for the ability to be able to hopefully iron out and work through situations that will benefit our county and all residents here. Watch over and protect us all, keep us safe, and help us with our deliberations. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
Would you join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Anderson, if you would, let's call it a roll at this time. If you're present, press your white button so that we can have a record of your attendance.
I have twenty present, four absent. Commissioner Bain, Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Clyde Lynch.
Thank you. Commissioner Bain is out of town on business. Commissioner Cook remains ill. Commissioner Lynch is recovering and Commissioner Jones is en route as we speak. I think he had his first ballgame today, so said he would be a bit late. So we'll be expecting Commissioner Jones momentarily. I'd like to ask you, this is your first occasion to be with us. This is the legislative session of the Williams County Commission. We'd ask your cooperation to please turn off your cellphone, your pager, and assist us in that if you would please. Mr. Lynn Sutton and Sheriff Jeff Long are sergeant-at-arms tonight and want to thank them for being here with us. Approval of minutes of the regular February ninth, two thousand and nine county commission meeting. Minutes were mailed to each of you. Entertain a motion. Commissioner Walton, a motion. Commissioner Chalfont the second. Any further discussion? See none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Introduction and acceptance of the highway commission minutes. These were mailed out to you as well. Entertain a motion to accept those. Commissioner Mills, Commissioner Davis the second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show that unanimous as well. Under citizens communication, this is the section of our agenda that we allow citizens to come before us and address our body. If you would, when you come to the microphone, please give us your name and your home address and identify yourself for the record and we'll allow you to speak before the commission. The first name is Mr. John Lackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, commissioners. My name is John Lackey. I live at nineteen thirty Split Log Road in Brentwood. I also serve as the chairperson of your Williamson County Water and Wastewater Authority. I am here tonight to address the issue of the grassland sewer and from two perspectives. One, I want to apologize to you. The water authority didn't have a quorum at our most recent meeting, so we did not get to act on the resolution that's in your package tonight. I felt like, though, that it was imperative that you have a sense of what that commission, how they felt about this project and hopefully I can convey that to you. I think, as most of you know, we've had a number of resolutions regarding this that have come before you. They have, the history of that through the water authority has been that they're a hundred percent behind the project. They have supported all of those. I cannot tell you how we would have voted. I can only give you my judgment. My judgment is they would have been unanimous on the resolution that you have before you tonight. I think it's important you know that so that you have some concept of our feeling and having no way I could drag people in from out of town or that were sick, we just had to cancel our meeting. But that basically is my, my presentation to you to say they are, in fact, in support of the resolutions and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. Andy, Andy Creek? Andy, Andy?
Andy.
Okay.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Creek. I'm at three oh two Stable Road. I've been a resident of Williamson County since nineteen ninety-three and a resident of the Meadow Green subdivision and grasslands since two thousand and six. I've been active with another, several other of my residents over the past couple of years in the effort to move forward, the resolutions you have before you tonight regarding this issue, and I'm here tonight to encourage you to pass that. We, we are not happy about the additional costs, as I'm sure you all are not, are as well, the additional one point four million, but we also realize that it's not going to get any cheaper. The more it's delayed, the more expenses it's going to get, or it may not even be able to be done at all. Tonight, I can tell you that in the past six months, my husband and I have paid seventeen hundred dollars to have our, our septic repaired, and that is pennies compared to what you're gonna hear in a few minutes of other residents and most other residents in our area have much worse septic system than, than I do. But I wanted you to have a little bit of perspective of even a very minor repairs can be quite expensive for the homeowner in, in this area. We also want to mention that this isn't just a homeowner issue. This is also an environmental issue. The Harpeth River is polluted from this. Every time it floods in the floodplain in that area, there are failing septic systems that border that river and raw sewage goes into the Harpeth. So in addition to helping homeowners be able to hook onto sewer and better their own health and their own backyard, as, as my husband and I witnessed very terrible smelling things coming up in the middle of our yard recently, that we also need to think about the Harpeth where we all get our water, not just the county, but also the city. So I'm here tonight again just to encourage you to please pass that regardless of the increase of cost. I don't want to pay that money either, but it's something that we have to do in order to be able to continue to live where we do and not have our properties end up being condemned because they can no longer perk. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Randy Trigg. Live at one eleven Pine Circle Drive and have for forty-five years. Maybe not the oldest resident there, but I'm creeping up on it, baby, fast. I have been around here long enough to have had my first surgery in this hospital, and there was a time when John was my soccer coach and that was...
Football.
Football. Was it football? Okay.
No.
Right. A secret play. Folks, I just, I, I can get up here and plead in front of you. I can come up here and plead in front of you. I can do any number of things for you to hear what the dilemma is like in our neighborhood and has been for so many years. I can't tell you when the first time I had to go into my system and have it. In those days, somebody would come and make a, a minor change to it and help you a great deal. When at that time, I had three kids at home and I do not want to go in to some of the real stories that have happened in my home because of a failing septic system going back many years. The time has come. It's long past time to take care of this problem. And if I have to get on my knees, I guess that's, tonight's the night to do it. I'm not above it. We need to do something and we need to do it soon. And every day we wait, the price goes up, which is hard for me to believe, but that's what's happening. The administration is looking for shovel-ready projects. This one's not only shovel-ready, it's shovel-rusted. It's been hanging around too long and it's time to do something about it. And I just ask you tonight, please, do us, do Williamson County, do the Harpeth River, do the state of Tennessee a favor. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Richard Jones?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Richard Jones. I live in Farmington at one thousand seven Malvern Road, which is, if you will, on the other side of the tracks from Meadow Green. But thank you for considering this resolution tonight and I particularly want to thank Jack Walton and Mary Brockman, Ernie Williams, Greg Davis for taking the lead on this. And also thank you, Mayor Anderson, for your lead on this. And I don't know if Mayor Schwab is here tonight, but for him jumping in on behalf of the city to help us with this and also to Bo Butler, who's done extensive amount of work on this. And thank you, Chairman Lackey, if you're still here. Maybe he's gone. But we, we stand in support of this resolution and there's probably about, what, is there a dozen of us out here? Stand up for those that are, yeah, thank you, thank you. But, and for those that may be new to the commission, we took Mayor Anderson at his word about two years ago. We all were together, about four hundred of us, if I remember right, in the Williamson County Rec Center, and this has just gone on and on forever. And Mayor Anderson just finally put the gauntlet down and he just said, look, y'all get sixty percent signatures plus one and we'll get working on this. And I took him at his word. I, I could tell he wasn't bluffing. He was just done with this. And so Ron Fiennesstra and Andy Creek and Arlo and the list goes on and on. We, we got after it and we went door to door and we carried a notary with us or Tim Creek would run over and just notarize someone in a New York minute. And so we, we got it done and we realized it broke down with Lindwood Utility and we're grateful the city of Franklin has stepped forward and we just ask that the grassroots work that your administration has done through Mayor Anderson and ourselves as fellow citizens that we just hopefully get this done and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Michael Phelps. I live at eleven oh five Brookside Drive in Hillsborough Acres and have lived there for twenty years. And I've been involved for actually many, many years in some efforts over the years to try and get sewer. I actually remember talking to Robert Ring and then Clint Callicott and Mayor Anderson has picked up the ball and run with this. And so I like, my colleagues appreciate the work that's been done by our commissioners as well as Mayor Anderson. I've had quite a bit of problem myself. I've spent literally thousands of dollars in repairs. I have an acre lot. I've actually, back in nineteen ninety-eight, when we had lots of rain, the sewage literally flowed back into my house for several hours. I had fourteen thousand dollars worth of damage. I lived in a hotel for a little over two weeks. Since then, when the rains come in the winter and the spring, I've had to take my kids in the morning, back when they were young children, get them up in the morning, take them to the grocery store so they could use the bathroom before they went to school. Then at night, the last thing before they went to bed, put them in the car, take them again to the restroom so they could use the restroom because we couldn't flush the toilet, couldn't take a shower, couldn't use our water. And I thought, we live in the wealthiest county in this state, one of the wealthiest counties in the nation, yet some of us, people addition to myself, live in like third world countries in some respects during those rainy times. And so I would just urge you to support this. We, we've long needed this work to be done and as others have indicated, the cost just continues to go up and, and there is some threat of some condemnation. If that happens, all the neighborhoods there are going to suffer. Property values will go down and, and it's a real problem and I hope that you will vote for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the citizens' communication. We'll move on now to communications and messages. We have four late filed resolutions that I would like to ask your review. Resolution three oh nine fifteen is a late filed resolution that is before us this evening. If there's no objection, this is a resolution to approve the lowering of the speed limit along a section of Leapers Creek Road in Williamson County. Any objection to hearing that resolution? Mr. Walton, did you want to speak?
I'd like to speak after.
Okay, okay. Any objection to three oh nine fifteen being added to the agenda? I see no objection. Have resolution three oh nine sixteen, resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into an easement with Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation for installation and provision of electrical services to a water tank owned by Mill Croft and Utility District. Any objection to hearing three oh nine sixteen this, this evening? See no objection. We'll add that to the agenda where it's listed. Resolution three oh nine seventeen, requested by the property management department, resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into an easement with Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation for relocation and provision of electrical services. Any objection? See no objection. And then finally, late file resolution three oh nine eighteen, resolution to support and request a bridge located on State Route four thirty-one, Lewisburg Pike to be named after and in honor of Sam Smithson for his valiant service during World War II and intent to fund up to five hundred dollars for the signs. Any objection to three oh nine eighteen? I see none. We'll add that to the agenda. If you would, look on your agenda to the other section, resolution three oh nine four. That resolution is asking for approval of an interlocal agreement with the city of Franklin as it relates to the Meadow Green sewer project. And I need to move that up in front of three oh nine five. So we need to move three oh nine four up in front of appropriations three oh nine five because we don't need to be voting on an intent to fund something that we've not approved the agreement. So if you would, move three oh nine four up under appropriations and we'll hear that right before the resolution three oh nine five. Have one note here that, just make, make your note on an appointment for Pete Mosley listed on the information that's been given to you, the appointment of Pete Mosley to the planning commission or the reappointment of Pete Mosley to the planning commission, that he's actually in the, he's not in the third district, but's actually in, should be in district number five. So if you would, correct your appointment sheet for Mr. Pete Mosley to district five and not district three. That's all the communications and messages we have. Recognize that Commissioner Ricky Jones is here. Glad to have him here. Commissioner Walton, is at this point that you'd like to speak, sir, and be recognized?
Mr. Chairman, and I, I was gonna request that Commissioner, resolution three oh nine fourteen and three oh nine four kind of be lumped together, although one's in appropriations and the other one is not because they, they're related with the guests that we have here tonight.
Three oh nine fourteen? We've got to do the public hearing. Yeah, three oh nine fourteen is the, is the, is the public hearing on the non-traditional sewage system.
Oh, I'm sorry. My notes, correct. Yeah, I, okay.
Four and five. Four and five.
Okay.
Should be linked together based on the accident and moving that up. So...
Too much sewer tonight.
I understand. On a day like today, that's a beautiful day in, in America today. Report from county offices, Mayor Rogers Anderson, please.
Commissioners, let me have David just come on up here and give us a up-to-date on the budget side of it. Then immediately following this on your table or on your desk, you should have a brochure or something like this. I'm gonna have Joe Horn kind of touch on it. This came out in print on Friday, so we'll give you an opportunity to look at it. Joe can kind of go through it with you. And then next month or month after next, we don't meet next month. If you have questions, we'll, we'll try to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, given our regular reports tonight and then a little bit additional information, not a whole lot of good news out there these days, but we want to try to give you a little bit of good news. And as most of you know, we sold some bonds about a month ago on some projects we've been carrying for several months. Each time we have a bond sale, Moody's reviews our financial situation and looks at our bond rating, and they confirmed and renewed our triple A rating for all of our past debt and for this new debt, so we're glad to announce that. On the bonds that were sold, the general obligation bonds, we received a true interest cost of three point eight two percent. And on the school district bonds, the old rural debt bonds, we received an interest cost of three point eight three percent. And we think a lot of that is directly related to the triple A rating. The folks that are out there in the market looking to buy bonds are looking for quality and we hope that we can continue to report that to you. Also tonight on our Cool Springs Conference Center, last month, we had our December report, as I mentioned, was the best one that I could remember. Well, naturally, January slid down a little bit, so your January report shows a thirty-three thousand dollar deficit, but then they also jumped back in the month of February, which I think was late at your desk this afternoon, and we had a positive month in February of fifty-seven thousand dollars. So that's a good report there. Due to this being the month of February and the largest month for property tax collections and the trustee's office understandably being very busy and this meeting falling quite early in the month, we do not have all of the month-end numbers to do your budget report. We'll bring that to you at our next meeting. But we did get late this afternoon, the privileged tax report, and there are various reasons for this that we could go into, but basically this is the best privileged tax report we've had since October. So I'm just gonna look at it as good news. I'm not gonna try to analyze it too much and figure it out, but I'll just accept it. We have had some other encouraging news from the building permit office last week, that their weekly building permits last week were more than the entire month the month before. So I'm not gonna call it a trend yet. I'd like to see two or three months of that first. But as I say, we're gonna bring you any good news we can find. And also, if you look at the chart that we've been giving you the last few months, you'll notice that spike up for the months of February and we hope it'll continue in that direction. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions, Mr. Coleman? Thank you, sir. Mr. Horn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You have in front of you the two thousand eight annual report with the community development department. And essentially, this is something that we do every year to sort of give a, give a, if nothing else, something of a statistical abstract of the activity in the community development department. And many things that David noted in his presentation are true. Whenever possible, we can't try to do year-to-year comparisons and two thousand and eight was not a good year construction-wise. But then again, one nice thing about, you learn about anything having to do with planning is you don't look to just that year. You look beyond that and one can hope things will be better. At any rate, any questions that come up about this either tonight or in your leisure to read this, this particular report, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, were you members of my staff.
Any questions tonight, or Mr. Horn? If you would, review that report and direct any questions. Commissioner Hayes, please.
I just wanted to make a comment, Joe. I just want to compliment you and your staff on the excellent way that you have conducted meetings in College Grove and working with us as a village. We appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you. My staff has handled that. I've been, haven't been directly involved, which probably is the reason why you're complimenting us.
No, you led them.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, David, and thank you, Joe. Mr. Chairman, two items. One, the grassland. When that time comes for that resolution, I'd like the opportunity to speak during that time. We also need to thank Kristi Yearwood for her diligence and her dedicated work over the last several years. I know quite oftentimes, we don't always thank the lawyers, but I, and you know, I kid Kristi and I kid Bo Butler, but, and I appreciate the kind words all these people here have said about the county commissioners. They've been deeply involved in it. But without these two people to my immediate left, I just couldn't do it, couldn't have done it. But even an extra stroke of goodwill goes out to a guy by the name of Bo Butler. Some of you have heard me say this, but I have to say it again. You know, in this day and time, we're going through budget crunches and companies are looking for ways to squeeze a nickel here and squeeze a nickel there. Well, we ran out of nickels on this process that we were going through several years ago. And in talking to Bo and his immediate boss, a guy named Steve Lane at Smith, Sedge, and Reed, they felt so strong about this project. Both of those gentlemen have lived in our community, know the situation, the very horror stories they were talking about. And SSR, Smith, Sedge, and Reed, through Bo Butler stepped up to the plate and for the last long, long... the last long, long period of time, have been doing this project without a nickel. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to them, and thank you for their efforts, and particularly Bo personally and Kristi. The other item, I want to kind of hitchhike on what David's saying, about the budget processes. Although I don't think the schools have actually voted on it, David, Dr. David Heath will be up here in a minute, and you can talk to him about that, but we are moving extremely well on our budgets, thanks to all the other elected and appointed officials and the department heads. Unless something catastrophically happens between now and your July meeting, we should be very comfortable in our expectations for this year's budget. And I expect the schools to come in with those kind of good news. Now, they're going to have growth, and we're going to have to fund that growth, but we're prepared for that. We've also been going through the budget processes, although we haven't gotten into the elected officials, all elected officials that we have met with have agreed to the guidelines that have been put out by the Budget Committee, and that's a real plus for our community. If you haven't heard, over the last couple of days, there's a county that's touching us, that's looking at some very drastic measures of over $10 million in shortfall in next year's budget, and they're looking at personnel costs, they're looking at other kinds of costs. And I will start a journey here in a couple of weeks to all of our employees, and that's the sole purpose of standing up here, because our employees are the heart and soul, you know, the Joes and the Davids and the Dians, and they're the heart and soul of any government, any organization. All of you here have worked for people. I've worked for people, and I'm telling you, the difference is of the people, the quality of people that we've got here in this county. And we will pull this off regardless of we get any stimulus money, which is not looking very positive, but we will take care of our own in Williamson County. And that's just cinching up the girth and getting the job done, and this is not a pep talk, it's a fact of life that I seriously doubt we'll get very much money that will make a difference in our overall budget. But we've cut back 10 percent, we've locked in that 10 percent for the following year, and I'm looking forward to wrapping up this year and looking on out into the 18th month period that we're looking at here. So I tell you that, it's good news. Hopefully, some of the economy will begin to pick up. The 2010 and 11 will be a much better year for us, but I want to say thank you to all the employees and for your diligence, because I know it's tough. When we pull the string at my level, you get the phone calls, and I understand that. But you have hung in there with me, and I appreciate that very, very much. Houston, I'll try to answer any questions.
Any questions of the mayor this time? See none, thank you, mayor. Mr. Davis, would you be making your way up? There are two things that I want to have reported very quickly to you tonight. Last week, Commissioner Barnwell and I were in Nashville for two days with 250 of our peers across the state, and elected officials who were indicating that their tax collections year-to-date in some of these counties is 60 to 65 percent of what it was last year. And when we were there, just shows you what's going on across this state. And as Commissioner Barnwell and I were there, we're thinking, let's ask Mr. Davis to give us a quick update on where we are. I know we had a strange month in the month of February because it closed out on a, I guess on a Monday or Sunday or whatever, but, and I want to thank Mr. Davis because he's been out with knee surgery, and he agreed to come give us this quick report tonight. Joey, you've laid this at our desk. Tell us what this is and the good news from Williamson County.
Thank you, Chairman. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, Mayor Anderson, and other guests. Houston did call me last Tuesday night and asked me if I would give you an update on the property tax collections. And I could stand here and go through numbers, and I felt like it was just best to put them down for you in bullets where you could see what's going on. At the end of January 2009, for the 2008 Williamson County property taxes, we were 2 percent above the same period for last year, which Mr. Coleman reported that to you last month. If you take the year-to-date collections for this year, for October 2008, or for the 2008 taxes, and I'm talking about October, November, December, January, February, you'll see that the number that'd be shown on our books as year-to-date collections will show a slight decrease in the percentage of collections as compared to the same period last year for the exact reason that Chairman Aaron just told you about. This year, the last day, I hope all of you understand, taxes become payable the first Monday in the month of October, and you have until the following February, the 28th, to pay those without penalty and interest. Well, this year, February 28th fell on a Saturday. We did not open our office. We did one time many years ago and felt like it was not the best use of taxpayer money. But if you take Monday, March the 2nd, we found a law, and Mr. Cook helped me and some others, that said we could take the taxes in our office on Monday, March the 2nd, without penalty and interest. So if you add that Monday's collection, which was almost $9 million in one day, you'll find out that we're about 4 percent ahead of same period last year on that. What we're, what we, we looked at a long time today, and looked at a lot of numbers today, Karen, my staff and I, and what we want to tell you is that already, we have collected 93.5 percent of the total tax aggregate up through March tonight. That was up through the numbers, 2:00 this afternoon. Last year in March, we had collected 95.8 at the end of March. So you see, we're at 93.5 now, 98.5 at the end last, so we've still got the rest of this month to go. It's my opinion that we're in very good shape. Are there any questions on the numbers, or anything else I can tell you about the office numbers?
Any questions, Mr. Davis? See none, thank you, Joey.
I do plan on coming back, sir, in May and giving you a full report on what's happened with the property tax, the property tax freeze, but I'd be very remiss if I didn't stand here and thank this commission for the support that you give to our office. And I know every elected official, every appointed official thinks theirs is the most important, and I understand that. We wouldn't have them if they didn't feel that way. But I want to thank you very much for giving us the things that we need to do to be able to do our job. And I do agree with what Mayor Anderson said. It's not us that make this county, it's our employees that make us what we are today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And then one other exciting piece of information that I picked up, that I just wanted a quick report, and I'm going to ask our clerk, Jeff Widby, to show. He's laid in front of you this information on our online renewals. We learned last week that this is really jumping statewide and particularly successful here in Williamson County, and we want to promote this www.tennesseitagsanytime.com. Jeff has been kind enough to give us this report. Jeff, cover this for us real quick, and then we'll move on.
All right, yes, sir. As Chairman Aaron was saying, we have started doing the online renewals, and we've had great success, and our customers love it. Last month was a short month in February, but we had around 953 renewals that were done online. That was around 12 percent of the total renewals that we had. Every day, we keep having more and more do it. Before we came over here, we had about 10 that had already went online and applied for it since we closed at 4:30. So the way we look at it, it's like having a satellite office in your own home or your office 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You can go on, try to renew. We'll get it to you in about three days, and it's been great. We really appreciate everybody's support and look forward to everybody using it in the future.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Commissioner Williams, please?
Yes, sir.
How do y'all handle the emissions control? Will you be doing it online?
When we do it online, when you go and have your car tested, they're linked into the website, and it automatically sends that information to us. So one of the questions we do have is what do we do with our emissions? There's not anywhere that you fill it in online. Well, we get the information from the emissions testing place, and we actually print a copy in our office, so the customers just keep that for themselves, keep their copy for their records. And if you haven't had it tested, it lets you know, and if you have, then we print off a copy, and that's it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
But really, we want to promote that, tennesseitagsanytime.com. It's very simple and easy, and as Jeff says, no lines. It's available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And Jeff, thank you for that report. Ms. Lane, thank you for putting this together, because it does put a satellite in every house that's got a computer.
Absolutely. State of County, Wayne.
Thank you very much. Moving on, any other reports of any of the committees, county offices? I see none. Appointments, elections? Excuse me, Dr. Heath, I was such a run, I forgot you. Dr. Heath? Roger said everything's going so well, I thought I took him as word.
I can be forgotten, that's fine. One thing I would say, we had an interesting little twist this month, usually, and I say this because the first eight or 10 years I was here, we lost students during the year. Our enrollment would go down from the first day to the end of the year. Then it started growing throughout the year, and this month, when we got our figures, our 20-day report, they had gone down 30, about 30 students. And we looked at it, and we thought, well, the effects of the economy have finally hit, people aren't moving in. And then we researched it and found out that Fairview High School had graduated 30 kids early, and it really didn't have anything to do with our enrollment. So congratulations to them. We did, board had its budget workshop a couple of Saturdays ago, and I think they will approve a budget on Monday night. It's not a luxury budget, but it's an adequate budget and meets the guidelines of the commission. Do have one bit of business that I could just give you a bit of information about now that maybe you'll save a minute later on. We have before-year resolution that keeps coming back, the one on buses. We were asked to check on what we could get with a cancellation clause, and we got a pretty good response. The company that had the low bid on a 78-passenger bus, which is a bus we decided to buy, plus the special ed buses, same vendor, said that if we canceled by May 27th, there would be no charge. One of the vendors would not even talk about cancellation, and the other vendor said a $2,500 max charge up to May 10th. So we've got till the 27th, we're going to go with that bidder. So we've got till the 27th of May. We do need to get the resolution passed because we need to order, but we have a stop-gut measure if the legislature passes.
What was that date again, Dr. Heath?
May 27th.
May 27th, that you can change or cancel the order with no penalty.
Right.
Very good. Any questions, Dr. Heath? I see none, thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to report? Report to county offices, any committee, or anybody before we start moving here. Elections and appointments, emergency communications, district board directors, unexpired term expiring 3/12 for districts 4 and 5. Mr. Riley Amacher, who's a long-service person to that board, has resigned. The nomination is Presley Hughes. Commissioner Green, Commissioner Little II, nomination of Presley Hughes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Williamson County Regional Planning Commission for four-year terms expiring March of 13. Pete Mosley, nomination Pete Mosley. Holly Givens, nomination Holly Givens. Paul Pratt Jr., nomination Paul Pratt Jr. Stephen Lane, nomination Stephen Lane.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Walton, the motion. Commissioner Brockman II, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Zoning Appeals Board, five-year term expiring 3 of 14. Sue Workman, appointed nomination, Sue Workman.
Move approval.
Commissioner Langston.
Second.
Commissioner Davis II, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Highway Commission, County Commission Appointment, two-year term expiring March of 11. Northeast District, Richard Folks, nomination Richard Folks. Northwest District, Stan Tyson, nomination Stan Tyson.
Move for approval.
Well, let me pick somebody. Who was that? Commissioner Williams, I heard. Commissioner Walton II for the nomination accepting. These, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Notaries, you've received the list of notaries that Ms. Anderson has given us, and if you would, will, do you have that up for vote on the board? All those in favor, the notaries?
Uh-uh.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner, I need to recuse myself because my name is on that list of notaries.
You don't recommend it? Okay.
I can't vote on it.
Commissioner Wilson is declaring a conflict on the notaries list, so you've received that in the mail. Any other comments on the notary list? If you're in favor of, I'll entertain a motion to accept. Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Hayes II. All in favor of the notary list as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Commissioner Wilson abstaining. Thank you very much. Consent agenda, we have one resolution. It's on the consent agenda, Resolution Number 30913. Resolution accepting roads in the Silverstream Farm, Section 1A, as a part of the county road system for maintenance by the County Highway Department located off Rocky Fork Road. Commissioner Walton?
Move for approval.
Motion second by Commissioner Brockman. Any discussion on the consent agenda? See none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button.
Yeah.
Has everybody's voted? Wish to vote, record a vote, please.
Okay. Commissioner.
Jack. Thank you. 21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted, 21 yes and 0 no. Okay, moving on to the no unfinished business, new business zoning. Public hearing regarding Resolution 30914, a resolution to adopt amendments to zoning ordinance originally adopted on April 18, 1988 regarding the regulation of non-traditional sewage disposal systems. At this time, I will open the public hearing. It's open. If you would, please come to the microphone and give us your name and address. We'll give you an opportunity to address this resolution as a public hearing before this body this evening. Anyone wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. We'll now entertain Resolution 30914, a resolution to adopt amendments to zoning ordinance originally adopted on April 18, 1988 regarding the regulation of non-traditional sewage disposal systems. Commissioner Walton, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman II, Planning Commission recommended Commissioner Walton.
10 for, 0 against.
Water and wastewater authority recommendation.
No, Mr. Walton.
Thank you, 6 0. Let's see, explanation, Commissioners Walton, Hancock, and Brockman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About a year ago, the county put a cessation on alternative sewer systems to study that, and this is what this is, to come back. What they're trying to do is make a regional sewer system for some of these new developments so we wouldn't have, every development would have their own sewage plant. I may add, this has been beat around pretty good in the Planning Commission. I'm not 100% sold on it. I think this is the best we can come up with. It can and probably will be changed by the time the plan update comes out. So it'll be a working document, and we'll move from there.
Thank you, sir. Add to that, Commissioner Brockman or Hancock?
No, I would just say I support it, and it does provide us with a method to go forward after the cessation, and it has been studied, and this is coming up with something. I think it does, I do agree with the philosophy of what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Hancock, can you follow?
I agree with what's been said.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions of anybody of either of these three commissioners sponsoring this resolution? If there are no questions, we're ready to vote. If you're in favor of 30914, press the yes button. If you're opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote, record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution 3091, resolution appropriating $7,057 state funds from pre-K software materials and supplies. Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Mills. School Board Report, 10 yes, 0 no. Education Committee?
5 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Budget Committee, Commissioner Green?
Budget Committee voted 4 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a state grant for our pre-K program.
This is a state grant for our pre-K program. It's for a program called Touching the Lives of Children. It's for use to buy software, materials, and supplies, and there's no match required by the county.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Barnwell on Resolution Number One? I see none. If you're in favor of 3091, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record the vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
21 yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. 3092, resolution transferring funds between major categories for certain salary account codes in the 2008-09 General Purpose School Fund. Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Mills. School Board report, 10 yes, zero no. Education Committee?
5 for, zero against.
Thank you. Budget?
Budget Committee voted 4 for, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes, sir. This is an annual exercise where we have the money budgeted, but we have to move it between accounts. There are sufficient funds available to do this, and there's no salary increases based over the authorized contract.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Barnwell? I see none. If you're in favor of 3092, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted? Wish to vote? Record the vote, please.
21 yes.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. 21 yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution Number 3093, resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of Commissioners approval of an intent to fund up to $2,171,700 for the purchase of buses. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Walton, the second. School Board, 10 for, zero no. Education Committee?
6 for, zero against.
Thank you. Budget?
Budget Committee, 4 for, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Before we get into the explanation, I'd like to propose an amendment, which is just a typo change on the fourth whereas. The education rule is actually 0520-1-5-01. 014B versus what is on there.
So, change the 5 to a 1?
Correct.
5, 0520, 1.
Dash 5.
Dash 5, dash 01.
Dash 01.
4B.
4B.
That's appropriate amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Langston, the second. Let's vote on the amendment to make that change. You got it loaded, Linda? We'll vote the amendment. Revoiced vote?
I can, do you want me to load it?
No, no. All in favor of the amendment to change to flip the 1 and the 5, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Short unanimous. So, we're back to the original motion. It's amended. Commissioner Barnwell?
Okay. A lot has happened since last month when I pulled this resolution. I'd like to thank Dr. Heath and his staff for the excellent diligence they performed on this when we tried to reword this. The legislation that was before, the state personnel, prior to Dr. Heath getting involved, did not include our class of bus. And through Dr. Heath's efforts and the chairman's effort, and we've talked to our reps, and they have now added our buses to this legislation, so we are going to be part of this legislation when it passes, if it passes. This is, Chairman and I, like I said, we were downtown last week. We sat in the meeting of the K-12 Education Subcommittee, and this was supposed to be a topic of discussion. It was rolled over till this week, and the maker of the resolution told me that the Department of Safety, who was on board with this change in the law, was not able to attend, and he wanted him there to be part of this thing, to let the other members know that he was in favor of this extension. So, basically, this is the ability for the school board to order the buses. As Dr. Heath has said, we do have a brilliant cancellation clause that's going to help us because they'll be out of session by May 27th, and we should have a decision whether we have to actually purchase these buses by then. So, I would recommend approval.
Any other questions of Commissioner Barnwell on Resolution 3093 as amended? See no questions? So, if you're in favor of 3093 as amended, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record the vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
21 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously is adopted. Resolution moving up, 3-094, resolution to approve an interlocal agreement with the City of Franklin concerning sanitary sewer for the Metta Green Grassland Sewer Project area in the unincorporated county. Commissioner Walton? Davis, Brockman, and Williams?
Second.
Waste and wastewater authority did not meet, which you heard the report from their chairman tonight. Property Committee?
5 for, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 4 for, zero against.
Okay. Explanation, Commissioners, whoever wants to go first. Commissioner Walton?
This is the agreement, interlocal agreement between the City of Franklin and Williamson County to take the wastewater from the Grassland Sewer Project area that has been previously discussed. It's, just, the attorney on this, Ms. Earwood, has worked this out with the Franklin attorney, and the City of Franklin has already passed it. So, urge this body to pass it.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Brockman or Williams?
Me.
Davis?
That's it.
Ready to vote?
Just do it.
Okay. 3094 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record the vote, please.
21 yes.
21 yes, zero no. So, we do have approval of the interlocal agreement with the City of Franklin. So, now we will entertain Resolution 3095. That resolution is, resolution of intent to provide additional funding for up to $1.4 million for costs associated with the construction of sewage trunk lines to be a part of the sewage collection system for the provision of sewage services.
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, the motion. Commissioner Williams, the second. Water and wastewater authority did not meet. Property Committee?
Property Committee, 5 for, zero against.
Commissioner Green. Budget Committee, please.
Budget Committee, 4 for, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that I would like to start by making an amendment to this resolution tonight, if that's possible. The amendment that I'm offering is that we would remove the final language from the very end of the resolution, and you would put a period after the words "a future bond issue." This literally removes the last 11 words from the resolution, and what it means is that those 11 words would take away the affected homeowners paying back this loan that we are offering up tonight. It would mean that the county would actually be a part of funding this project, and I hope you will consider it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Williams, the second, and Commissioner Brockman, if you understand your intent, that also strikes the last 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 words of the fourth whereas.
That's correct, yes.
That's your motion to strike said bonds to be repaid by effective homeowners through the collection and fees end, and then in the last, now therefore be resolved, put a period after issue and scratch, and repaid by the effective homeowners through the collection fees. That's the amendment.
That's the amendment.
Because this is as the resolution was passed. This, you can't change that resolution.
She says she can't.
That's the way that resolution was passed, in the fourth whereas.
Passed by you.
By this body. The fourth whereas, we can't change that. She's changing the now therefore be resolved.
Counsel, would you address? The question that's coming up is that the whereas, it's up there in the body, that's what this body has already passed, and that cannot be changed. Counsel, would you?
I'm not asking to change the initial $1.7 million.
Right, but she's corrected. The whereas is not for a future repayment, it's just explaining what was already passed by you, but you can change the now therefore.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so that one is okay. All right? Okay, discussion. Commissioner Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Y'all just answered one of the questions I had about this because this was changing from what I understood had been presented. My second question, Mr. Chairman, perhaps best answered by counsel. Does what we're doing here in terms of laying sewer line, trunk lines in that area, does that fall under the requirements of sewer systems and water systems being operated as enterprise funds and not to be allowed to co-mingle general tax dollars with those funds?
If I could, Kristi, would you come forward to address that question, please? Did you hear the question?
I did.
Okay.
It's not so much a co-mingle. In this instance, the money would be issued and be repaid through an assessment area that would be set up for these neighborhoods, and it would be assessed against the property. I don't know if that answers your question, but it's not necessarily public enterprise funds. That's something that if the county were going to own and operate the system...
I understand the concept of an assessment district, Mr. Chairman, if I may, but what we're being asked here tonight is to use general county tax dollars to pay the overrun, if you will, of what was expected for putting in this, these series of trunk lines in these neighborhoods. So, there you go about bringing general county tax dollars to bear in addition to the assessment district.
Right.
So, you would not consider that co-mingling with a enterprise fund?
Well, I don't know that I have an exact answer to that question, Commissioner Smith, because I wasn't aware of the amendment until I got here this evening, a few minutes ago. So, as far as whether it can be co-mingled or if there is even a public enterprise fund, since the county's not going to be operating the sewer system, I'm not entirely sure how that would work. And I don't want to give you an opinion that I'm just making up right here on the floor because I don't like to do that.
Like, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Langston, please.
I have...
Kristi, why don't you stay close because...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was one of the questions I had. I have been very supportive and do support the funding for this project. I think it's something the mayor, as all of the residents have talked about, your commissioners have represented your area very effectively, but I cannot support this amendment, and I think there are several reasons why I can't do that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the reasons that this did not come through, through the normal channels in terms of the budget and in terms of property and water and wastewater is because I sort of had an aha moment. And in that aha moment, I looked at the project, and I looked at the communities' long suffering on this issue. You know, we can talk about 2003. I brought it just to sort of show you. I can't be any more eloquent than our speakers earlier this evening about the issue, and I urge your support. But this particular amendment says we're going to be part of the solution financially only because we got to this crossroads and we turned right to Franklin. And in order to find that better solution, and it is, the mayor has done a wonderful job getting the City of Franklin to agree to this interlocal agreement. They weren't interested 12 years ago when the grassroots effort tried to go there. But this just says, we're not setting an example for the future. The example has already been set with the $1.7 million that the homeowners are going to pay back. This is just that extra portion that is going to cost now to run the trunk lines, improve the pump station, and then turn it all over to the City of Franklin. It's just, it's an extraordinary moment, and you have this time that has gone on forever making this problem completely disastrous in terms of the public health issue. So, my thought was that it really is a fair thing to do. It can be seen as something that we are reinvesting in this community, and there are many homeowners that you would not describe as affluent. They are going to pay thousands of dollars, each of them, to hook onto the system, between $7,000 and $9,000 to get all of that infrastructure, collapse their septic, over $4,000 to the city to tap on. So, they are incurring all of these costs, and that is fair. This is just saying, this final request for funding to make this happen and make it happen quickly, as it should be, is to ask the county to be an assistance.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Paire, please.
I can't support the amendment just because it doesn't sound like, from the information I understand, that it's going to cost each homeowner that much more a month for the additional fee. I wonder, Chairman, could the mayor speak to the amount per month that each homeowner might have to pay? Is that okay?
Mr. Coleman, if you would come forward and address the issue, this additional $1.4 million with this amendment that's offered, what additional monthly amount would it be required to fund that by the homeowners?
Mr. Chairman, if I could give you just a brief history to where we are to date. The original $1.7 million, to my recollection, was estimated to cost the homeowners approximately $25 a month. Now, when I say approximate, you know, the interest rate has been established on that at 4.2%, so we feel pretty confident on that number. This 1.7, until we actually go into the market and borrow the money, even though we've gotten very good interest rates, we just won't know until we get there. Now, we've done a lot of work on this, and the mayor, and Kristi, and Bo, and I think our charge is to make it as cheap, as inexpensive as possible to the homeowners. The latest proposal that we looked at even this afternoon was that we would take the 1.7 million, that's the new money, I'm sorry, 1.4 million is the new money, and borrow that on a 30-year bond. Then we would go back to the original 1.7 that we borrowed for 20 years and refinance that on a 30-year bond. Now, that increases the overall cost because of interest, but it would reduce the monthly cost to the homeowners to approximately $35 a month.
Totally.
Yes, sir. But we still have that problem of the interest rate that we just don't know, and with most loans, and especially during this day in time, if you extend from 20 years to 30 years, you could have an adverse effect on your interest rate. So, to sit here and tell you exactly what it's going to be, I wish I could do that. But we feel like possibly as low as 35, maximum of 50, but with the measures we've talked about this afternoon, we feel like we could be down more than $35 to $40 a month.
And that's total for both bond issues?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Paire for a follow-up?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hancock, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a few brief remarks that why this is different from other things. This problem in these areas was before there was any protection out there like there is now. And these areas are a lot the reason that that protection is out there now because people saw, people like myself, what would happen if you didn't have some type of regulations in place, strong regulations, to keep this from happening. We had, not similar, but in a way it was similar, Southern Woods, which I think now is in Brentwood or Nolansville one, they were in the early days of a different type system, and it went south. And we had to step up to the plate then and make some other arrangements. I think they ended up hooking on to Davison County, so Trunk Sewer Line. But I say all that to say this, this is not setting a precedent, this is not doing any of that kind of stuff. This is solving a problem that people stepped into and didn't have any idea it was happening. And we need to step up to the plate here. We really do. Thank you.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I 100% supported the resolution as it was written, but I've got a couple more questions. Some of them were along the lines of Commissioner Pera. The $35 to $50 a month, that's that interest rate the county could get, assuming the homeowners could get a loan for this amount of money, for whatever amount of money they're going to have to put in, does anybody have a clue what that interest rate will be if they went out on the market themselves? I dare say it'd probably be more than 4% of what they would get. So that's a participation, in my mind, that's a participation financially for these homeowners from the county is the ability to use the county's AAA rating. The second question I have is, does anybody have a, any type of figures on how doing this project will affect the value of those homes? Is there anybody that can speak to that? I mean, has anybody done a market study of homes with sewer versus...
Mr. Butler, would you address that issue because it's...
Certainly. In the study we did in 2003 for the whole Grassland, Medagreen area, we contacted some property assessors, and at that time, they told us same house on Given Street would bring about 11% more with sanitary sewer than it would on a septic. And if the septic system's not working, then of course it's much greater than that.
Of course, okay. All right. Thank you very much. I 100% support the project. I can't support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Wilson, please.
Yes, I just want to briefly say that having lived here most, just about all my life, realized that when this project started in the '60s, that this was the neighborhood. It was a shining example. And these homeowners have had to literally fight for all these years to have upgrades and to get things done, and we were hoping that the Lindwood Utility District would follow through and do their part. But I support it because I personally know some people that have lived there and have been there in their homes when it's flooded and when it's had some problems. And I feel for them, and I'm going to support it.
Commissioner Russell Little?
Move to call the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Question being called for. Let's vote to call the question. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question has been called. So we're going to vote on the amendment. The amendment that's offered is 3095. 3095 is to remove, put a period at the bond issue period and remove and repay by the effective homeowners through the collection fees. That's the amendment that's properly on the floor. It's the amendment that the question has been called for. So if you're in favor of the amendment as presented, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote. Commissioner Hayes? Court of vote, please.
10 ayes, 11 no.
Resolution, the amendment fails. 10 ayes and 11 no. So the amendment fails. We're back to the original resolution as presented, 3095. Is there further discussion on the resolution as presented? Commissioner Davis, please.
Thank you. Let's try from a little different angle. I'd like to amend this resolution 3095. And what's different about mine is in the fifth whereas, you notice that $750,000 is the cost of upgrading part of the city of Franklin's system to handle this additional sewage. What I'm proposing to do is change the 750 to come from the county. So in lieu of the 1.4 million, the county would step up to the plate and cover the 750. That would still leave the residents paying the original 1.7 plus another half of this. So what I'm indicating is the homeowners would still repay the amount, but we're reducing the total 1.4 million by 750,000.
That's appropriate amendments, are second. Commissioner Walton, the second. Commissioner Davis's amendment is to change the fifth whereas to read that, including upgrades to the city of Franklin Water Treatment Plant, approximately 750,000. Your amendment would in effect have the county paying that 750 and it not be charged to homeowners. That's your...
That's correct.
That's your amendment. And that's the second. Discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Davis's amendment. Just a little history. When all this came back years ago and we, Smith, Sekman, Reed did a great job, and they had an estimate of what this would cost. And then time elapsed. It took us a long time to get the easements worked out. Multitude of things transpired to where we couldn't get to this far. We changed where we were going, and that's, we're going to city of Franklin, to their sewer treatment plant, which in the long run is the best thing and right thing to do. So I agree, some of it, the remainder, not upgrade the plant to handle the flow in Franklin, but the remainder of this is the increased cost from point A when we first started an estimate to point B. So I agree with Commissioner Davis's amendment, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Williams, please.
I join Commissioner Walton in asking for your support. This, to me, is a no-brainer. This is a public health issue, and if the purpose of government is not to protect its citizens, and when a man sits in front of me in this body and says, "I got to take my children to the public grocery store and use the bathroom," and in the evenings, if I don't step up to the plate and relieve him as much financial responsibility as I have, I don't need to be sitting on this commission. So I ask that you support Commissioner Davis's amendment to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel has advised me, and we'll, we need to amend the appropriate wording in the "now therefore be it resolved." If this passes, if this passes, we'll need to work that wording out. So we'll amend "now therefore be it resolved" to have the wording such, what would it be, counselor?
I recommend that we word it, "after collection of fees, we just include the language with the exception of the construction cost of the upgrades to the city's wastewater treatment." So what we'd basically do is accept an act of the...
Okay. Commissioner Pera, please.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine. I don't support the amendment. I just think the county shouldn't pay for it. But on top of that, paying the city of Franklin the $750,000, to me, doesn't appear right only because tap fees are supposed to cover the cost of new infrastructure. So, I mean, Franklin's already going to charge these people a tap fee. So I would add an amendment, if I could, to ask, request that the city of Franklin reduce their tap fees on these homeowners when, if they connect, because we're already paying them the $750,000 on the front end here. I would just add a resolution to that, just requesting the city of Franklin consider that.
Could I request you, Commissioner, let's vote this amendment?
It's fine.
Because it's two different issues, and if this passes, we'll come back and address, I'll allow you to offer your amendment.
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, the amendment that you all have on the floor now, I just want to clarify that the $750,000 approximate for the city, it's upgrades to the pump station and the collection system. So I just want to make sure that's clear. We're not upgrading any treatment or plants or anything like that.
Thank you. Further, Commissioner Pera?
I know, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Yes, I'm a little bit sort of against this. If I understood Mr. Coleman correctly, that the first $1.7 million, the way it's financed now, is about $30 a month per homeowner. And with this new creative financing we're talking about for the future, the whole package was going to be $35 a month. So we're looking at removing $2.57, $2.50 a month from the obligation of the homeowners, which I think is, we shouldn't even be discussing. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion on the amendment that's been offered by Commissioner Davis that removes from the homeowner's responsibility the approximately $750,000 the city of Franklin is charging, and as said, will structure the exact wording if this passes. Any other discussion on the amendment offered by Commissioner Davis? I see none. If you're in favor of the amendment offered by Commissioner Davis, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
11 ayes, 10 no.
11 ayes, 10 no. Amendment fails. We're back to the original resolution of 3095. It's on the floor, and any further discussion on the original 3095 as presented? Okay. Question has come from the front here, why did it fail in front of the Williamson County Commission? Any funding resolution that comes before this body must receive 13 votes. We require a minimum of 13 votes to pass any funding resolution. So without 13 votes, both of those amendments failed, the first one and the second one. So you must obtain the requisite 13 votes. That's a rule we follow for all funding and appropriation. So we're voting on 3095, intend to fund additional 1.4 million for sewage trunk lines in the form that was presented with no amendments. All in favor of a resolution 3095? Press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
21 ayes.
21 ayes, 0 no. Resolution 3095 is unanimously adopted, 21 ayes, 0 no. Mayor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before these people leave here, I thought I'd give them a little bit of oversight of what they can expect over the next several, excuse me, several days and weeks on this resolution that you all have done. We've asked Bo Butler to put together a timeline of when the bids into construction. We will try to get this, if I could ask Diane to get this on the web tomorrow, so they will know. Everything goes the way that we've got it expected. We anticipate putting this advertising out for bids on April 19th. That'll give us time to put all the final touches on it. On May 1st, we'll do the, receive the pre-qualification packages from the prospective contractors. We'll have a pre-bid conference on May 14th. We'll open the bids on May 21. And it takes us about 30 days to have a notice to proceed. So we'll actually have all the contracts signed and dated between May and somewhere in the middle, 1st of June to the middle of June, we'll try to get proceeded. We estimate, with, depending on the weather, 540 days for construction.
Very good.
Two other things, Mr. Chairman, if I could, while I've got the floor. I want to say thank you to five of the seven aldermen that voted tonight with Franklin and John Shore, the mayor, for working very hard with us. The realities of this is not because of Lindwood and their failure. It was just going to 30,000, 32,000 foot level. And I appreciate Lindwood just as well hanging in there with us as long as they possibly could. But in the long run, this should be the best for all of the citizens, as many people have, many people have indicated here. So I do want to say thank you for Franklin because many of you may not have realized this, and I want to get to Commissioner Pera's comment on the tap fees. This area in Grassland is outside the urban growth boundaries, and this is not done very often. In fact, I believe we've only seen it one other small time, and it was across the line. I'm not real sure, we really had to look hard. But for them to extend the services outside their bonded debt into the city limits, which many of you represent here, to offer and extend that arm to go to an area that is not in the urban growth boundaries and is not part of the annexation plan, it was a real gesture on five of those seven individuals that voted that night, and I will thank them very, I thank them very much. The other thing, Commissioner Pera, I understand you're wanting to get the tap fees waived for these folks. We have negotiated hard and long, and we may still find some elbow room in there, but I seriously doubt, if you put that in a form of a motion and you put that on here, I don't know that I can get that sold, and I'll have to come back to you. And I'll make every effort to waive those tap fees, but I, most utility companies do not waive the tap fees.
Commissioner Pera, please.
I'm not asking them to waive the tap fee. I would just ask them if they would consider reducing it by this 750, appropriate that across the people and reduce it by that amount, just because of the infrastructure costs that tap fees are supposed to cover, not, not obviously waive it. That wouldn't be fair.
And again, they file their filings with the state. Again, we'll bring this up in negotiations, and we've still got some i's to dot and t's to cross.
Commissioner Pera, you okay with just making that request? Because if in fact...
It's fine.
You pass a resolution and it doesn't fly, then that makes him have to come back to us in May, and we've missed two months.
No, it was simply a request to Franklin.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 3096. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008/09 Parks and Recreation Budget by $200. Revenues to come from donations, Commissioner Green?
I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Smith. Parks and Recreation Committee?
4-4, 0 against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
4-4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
These are revenues donated by the Brentwood Baptist Church for the Williamson County Community Ban made to the Recreation Department.
Okay. Questions of Commissioner Green? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution 3096, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
21 ayes.
21 ayes. 0 no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 3097. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008/09 Parks and Recreation Budget by $3,505. Revenues to come from donations, Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Little. Parks and Rec Committee report?
4-4, 0 against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 4-4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
As you can see under the revenues there, there are various organizations and groups that donated a total of $3,505 towards events at the Recreation Department.
Questions of Commissioner Green on 3097? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Somebody voted, you wish to vote? Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
21 ayes.
Thank you very much. 21 ayes, 0 no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 30911. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008/09 Juvenile Services Budget by $21,500. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds received from participants' fees. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Law Enforcement, Public Safety Committee?
Law Enforcement, six in favor, several against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, 4-4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is just getting the money that they charge to, for housing, juveniles, and detention from other counties back into their budget where they can use it for food supplies and other supplies and materials. And it's my, it's my understanding that, and Mr. Coleman can tell, that this is almost a yearly thing that they've been, they've been doing for quite a while.
Other questions? Commissioner Hancock on 3911. I see none. If you're in favor of this resolution, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
21 ayes.
21 ayes, 0 no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 3099. Resolution to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages at the agricultural... Resolution to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Agricultural Exposition Park for an event of the Williamson County Fair. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Walton. Property Committee?
Property Committee, 4-4-0 against, one abstain.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 4-4-0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will allow the Wine Festival to be part of a county fair, and it's been such a popular event and allows them to have the wine tasting, and it's a lovely event. I hope you can support it.
Questions of Commissioner Brockman? I see none. If you're in favor of 309-9, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Sixteen yes, two abstain, three no.
Sixteen yes, two abstain, and three no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 309-10. Resolution to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Agricultural Exposition Park for an event of the Franklin Noon Rotary Club. Commissioner Smith, please.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little the second. Property Committee?
4-4-0 against, one abstain.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 4-4-0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
Well, like the event at the fair, Commissioner, some of you remember that the rodeo in- at times past has hosted the District 6760 District Conference. We'll have many Rotarians from Middle and West Tennessee there. This allows us to enhance their experience at the district conference as they visit our rodeo as part of the entertainment for that event, and I appreciate your support.
Questions of Commissioner Smith on 309-10? Commissioner Little, please.
One small typo under the third whereas, it's Friday, May 15th instead of 14th.
Okay, Friday, May the 15th. We'll just make that correction. Madam Clerk, if you'd change that. Jeff, if you'd fix that to May 15th.
Thank you.
Other questions? If you're in favor of 309-10, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
Sixteen yes, three abstain, two no.
Resolution is adopted as presented. Resolution 3912. Resolution to set in place a mutual notification procedures between Williamson and Rutherford County for zoning actions on abutting properties. Commissioner Walton, please.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Davis the second. Planning Commission, report?
10-4-0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, Commissioner.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This actually originated in Rutherford County through Mayor Anderson's office. Rutherford County Commission had passed a resolution, and it's in that first whereas, and this sums it up, resolution to set in place procedures to notify adjoining county when zoning action is proposed in Rutherford County for property adjoining the county line. In other words, if they've got a subdivision on the Williamson County side, they're asking that they would notify us and likewise we would do the same.
And we have a resolution, I don't know, did this get to every Commissioner? This resolution was passed by the Rutherford County Commission, and as you can see, it's a reciprocal agreement. They notify us, we notify them, so if somebody starts working on their side of the fence, then they appropriately notify us. So other questions on 309-12? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-one yes.
Twenty-one yes, zero no. Unanimously adopted. Resolution 309-15. A resolution to approve lowering the speed limit along a section of Leapers Creek Road in Williamson County. Commissioners Hester and Hancock? Motion is made and seconded. This went by before the Highway Commission and was approved 4-4-0 against. Commissioner Hester, I'll recognize you, and Commissioner Hancock, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request from the Tennessee Department of Transportation to facilitate construction of 840. The equipment and the construction traffic, there would be- is in need of lowering this speed limit from 35- from 50 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour. And it is anticipated that this speed limit reduction would only be for a period of two years and only for house numbers on Leapers Creek Road from 5696 to 5770. And some of the construction signs are already up, and thanks to Highway Department and for their efforts on this.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, just to make it a lot safer, and I hope everyone supports it.
Any other question on 309-15? If you're in favor, 309-15, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 309-16. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an easement with Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation for installation and provision of electrical services to a water tank owned by Mill Crofton Utility District Commissioner Tommy Little?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Brockman?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong resolution.
The second. Property Committee?
Property Committee, 5-4-0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is to grant an easement to supply electrical power to the water tank, and I did have one question, because when I signed this, I thought that said there was a change from making it overhead to underground, but this still says overhead, so I was curious as to which it is.
Mayor?
Mr. Little, what you're doing is giving the right to go onto our property. It's our intent, as Ms. Brockman said at the meeting the other night and you brought up, to ask them to take that underground, or take that buried in the ground.
Other questions on 309-16? If we could have the record reflect that, you know, it is our intent to be underground? In favor of 309-16, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 16 is unanimously adopted, 21 yes, zero no. Late file- oh, excuse me, resolution 309-17. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an easement with Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation for relocation and provisions of electrical services. Commissioner Walton, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brockman. Explanation, Commissioner Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This didn't come to our attention until late last week, so it didn't have time to go through any committees, although in talking to Al Ritter, he supports it and doesn't see a problem with it. We've got a homeowner that's adding on or building another structure, and hopefully that's one of the permits that they alluded to earlier. But they need to run more power to the place and they're gonna put up a pole with guide wires, and they need an easement on the county property to put the pole on.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Parr, please.
I would just like to understand, which is the county's property on this map? It doesn't really label, is it?
It's that right, it's that-
This area here? Okay, all right.
It's a little high shape, piece of property that apparently will have a guy wire on it, so. Any other questions, Commissioner?
No, that's it, thank you.
Anybody else? Resolution 309-17 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-one yes.
Twenty-one yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 309-18. Resolution to support and request a bridge located on State Route 431, Lewisburg Pike to be named after and in honor of Sam Smithson for his valiant service during World War II, and intend to fund up to $500 for the signs. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Walton, the second. This went before the Highway Commission, 4-4-0 against. And let's see, went to Budget? Nope. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes, please.
As in the heading, it certainly mentions that Mr. Smithson was a valiant hero of the of World War II. At the point of his death, he was the oldest living veteran in Williamson County. He had received the Good Conduct Medal, the American Campaign Medal, the European, African, Middle East Campaign Medal, the World War II Victory Medal, the Prisoner of War Medal, and the Purple Heart. He's lived in Williamson County all of his life, in the general Bethesda area, and the state had wanted to recognize him by naming a bridge. And so it was requested by our state representative, Cassidy, that in order to present this to the state, they always like to have our endorsement. At that point, the state was planning to pay for the signs. Last week, after the filing of this was done, the state had contacted us and said there'd been a freeze, as you know, on all state funds, and so there would not be any money, and they wondered if the county would pick up the fee for the signs. At the point of coming to the Highway Commission, I was not prepared to ask for the money because I thought, well, this was something that perhaps we needed just to pass the hat. So I was thinking passing the hat tonight and other places, because the state had said it would be somewhere between $325 and a little bit more than that. I was very appreciative at the reception that the Highway Commission gave, led by Mayor Anderson. They believed that in their budget, they had the signage money not to exceed $500 to give these signs, to have these signs paid for, for this worthy, valiant hero of Williamson County. So we will, at the passing of this, we will request of the state the making of the signs, and they in charge, in change, will bill us. These will be fitting signs to- for the worthy hero. The bridge nearest his home is the one on 431 State Road over Rutherford Creek. There are a couple of more bridges there, and I don't think the final determination has been made, but the Rutherford Creek one near the Duplex Road is the one nearest the Smithson home. So I believe that would be the one that would be most likely to be chosen. I certainly would welcome your endorsement of this. A fine man he was, and he certainly served us well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions of Commissioner Hayes on this resolution? Very fitting and very proper. If you're in favor of 309-18, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes.
Twenty-one yes, zero no. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Any other comments or announcements or anything before we stand in adjournment? We will be in adjournment until the month of May. We do not meet in April, so wish you well and entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, say aye. We are in adjournment.